Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call our council meeting to order for September 11th, 2014. I'll ask you to please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge. Councilman Olds is going to give the invocation tonight, but I'll ask that we have a minute of silence for the lost deputy sheriff that was killed, and also the employee, the radio technician that died with a heart attack in a horrible episode the other night. And remember the issues that our first responders put themselves in every day in going to try to make sure that we're safe. And we need to honor them and thank them for their willingness to go out each day knowing that their life is potentially in jeopardy to try to make our life better.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us. God, thank you for each and every person gathered here tonight, council members, our mayor's staff, and all the public. God, I pray you lead us with your guiding hand. I pray, God, this day is it's a day of many tragedies to be remembered, 911. I pray for all the families, Lord, that've lost lives in New York and everywhere else around this country. I pray, God, for our service men and women. Lord, that your hand be upon them and to guide them and protect them as they go out to fight for us and our freedom, to be able to be here tonight, to have public meetings, to lead a city, a country, and a state in a way that's effective, beneficial, and fair for all. God, have your way with our lives, have your way with this meeting, and may the best outcome come to those who are here. Christ's name I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Hi, darling. This is the time of the year, or time of the month, when we welcome our new employees, and we have several tonight, and I'm going to ask, as I call your name, you please come forward here and stand and face your city council. Ross Dean P. Choice, Public Works. Walter M. Graham III, Public Works. Robert L. Jarrett, Finance. Corey E. Brazelton, Police Department. Jacqueline M. Ange. Did I say it right, Jacqueline?
Ange.
Ange, thank you, ma'am. Ange, Police Officer. Recreation Department is Jared K. Maseek. And Cultural Arts Department, Crystal R. Yaden. We're so glad to have you on board with the city, looking to help serve the general public here in the city of North Charleston. These are your council members. They are the people that give you the tools to do your job. They love this community that they serve, and what we expect of you is to give our community the best service possibly that you can. We ask that you treat everybody fairly, with dignity, and with honesty, and we hope that we have many long years together. It's a very rewarding experience to be able to serve other people and make a living doing it, and I salute you for making a choice, to make public service your choice of employment. God bless you, and you can turn around now and let your people you're working for see you. And ladies and gentlemen, our new hires, let's get them around. God may be seated. I'm going to ask Eileen from Trident Literacy Association, please come forward, and I'm going to ask our clerk to please read our proclamation. Eileen's not here?
No.
I'll forgive you. Go ahead, baby. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
A proclamation, whereas the need for a highly literate citizenry increases as our community moves toward an increasingly technological future, and whereas approximately 15,000 adults, or approximately 21 percent of the adults in North Charleston, do not have a high school credential and experience literacy issues that impact severely on their lives and families, their ability to work productively, and their full participation as citizens and residents of our city and state. And whereas Trident Literacy Association provides individualized instruction to approximately 1,000 adults in the city of North Charleston annually, including those who earn their GEDs and work keys, career readiness certificates, those who learn how to use the computer, and those who gain life skills and job skills, and financial literacy skills, and those who learn English as a second language. And whereas the city of North Charleston deems it important to recognize and highlight the economic and societal importance of literacy. Now therefore be it resolved that I, R. Keith Summy, Mayor of the City of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as Literacy Month, and September 24th through the 30th, 2014, as National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in North Charleston, South Carolina, and urge my fellow citizens to learn more about the importance of literacy and to become involved with literacy in our community.
We work with a lot of organizations in the city. I can tell you there's not one that does more to help individuals get control of their life and an opportunity to advance themselves, not only for themselves, but for their families as well. Because without the proper ability to read, the proper ability to communicate, it's hard to do any kind of job. Trident Literacy has been a wonderful member of our community for a long time, and this council greatly acknowledges what you do to make our community a better place. God bless you. Want to say a few words?
I would like to thank the council and everyone in North Charleston for your continued support to us. I know you do support us financially, so if you look around by your desk, I left you a couple dollar bills. And it has great literacy facts on the back that I think could, you know, be important for you to know. And we really, really, really look forward to roasting there, Summy, this coming February, and we'd like to have all of you there. So we'll be in touch soon, and thank you again.
That's a lot of meat to cook.
No, but it's going to be great. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to please come forward. That's that, Ms. Williams, Dorothy. And I'm going to ask Mark Conway to come forward. He's not here? We're going to give next council meeting, I'm sorry. That's all right, we'll make up for it next week.
I'm sorry.
It's a surprise.
Not anymore.
Item one is a request to approve the minutes from the August 28th, 2014 city council meeting.
Hear motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Mr. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson? He's not here.
Ask.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two is the final reading of an ordinance amending the provisions of Section 9-67 of the Municipal Code of the City of North Charleston, so as to define nuisances posed by certain externally visible items associated with construction activity.
Hear motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. In discussion. Hearing done. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three is the final reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute documents granting to S.E.E.N.G. rights of way across the parcels shown for purposes of installing transmission lines to serve Clemson Wind Turbine Test Facility and assign to the South Carolina Public Railways compensation associated therewith.
So moved.
Motion and a second, in discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Eileen?
Good evening. Can you advance the slide? Sorry.
Oh, I forgot.
So this is the proposed rezoning of 3109 North Atlantic Avenue, proposed rezoning from R1 to R2. The property owner is ADCIP2 LLC. The applicant is Ms. Carly Gent, represented by John Masalon. The area of the property is approximately a quarter of an acre, annexed in 1972 and is a part of Council District 10. This is a picture of the property as it was posted, and an area of the property showing that it is located at the corner of Carlton Street and North Atlantic Avenue in the Chocora Neighborhood. And the zoning of the property is showing that it is zoned R1, but there is a mix of R1 and R2 zoning throughout Chocora. And the proposed map amendment for this property, if the rezoning were approved, would be for this parcel to go from single-family traditional to multifamily residential. So this property, as I mentioned, is located in a neighborhood that has a mix of both uses and zonings, single-family, multifamily zoning. The property is currently configured as a duplex. We were not able to substantiate how it came to be a duplex, though county records seem to indicate it was built as a single-family home, however, at some point it was converted over, in that the neighborhood is a mix of uses and zonings. Staff recommended approval of the rezoning to R2, and the planning commission concurred.
Any questions by council? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, give us your remarks. I think this one's got the live mic.
Good afternoon, I'm John Masalon, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of this application. Carly Gent and I are here asking for approval of this rezoning. You've seen the map, and it's been pointed out that this property is in an area that is mixed use. It is currently configured as a duplex, and is right now being used as just one unit. It's got two separate entrances, a living room, a separate kitchen in each, separate bathroom in each, and one bedroom in each, so they're both one-bedroom units. It's on a pretty large lot, and so we don't anticipate a rezoning would create any congestion or confusion with parking in the neighborhood. As has been pointed out, this is a mixed area, so it would be consistent with the zoning that is there. And we've met with the Neighborhood Association a number of times on this property. Our clients are here to be good neighbors, we want to be good neighbors, and we feel like that we've got support in the community for this rezoning, so we'd ask you to approve it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue?
Good evening, council. My name is A.J. Davis, and I currently reside at 1919 Burton Lane. I also hold the position of the Chocora Cherokee Neighborhood Council President. As Mr. Masalon said, he had his representative, Ms. Carly Gent, meet with our neighborhood council, I believe, on two separate occasions, and they did reveal what the plan was for the property. Since that time, the neighborhood council has had the opportunity to debate the merit of this particular application, and at this time, speaking on behalf of what has come out of those discussions, the community is still kind of up in arms about whether or not this would be a good move. As many of you may or may not be aware, there was a move, maybe a couple of years ago, to protect our community from overzealous development by grandfathering in some of the properties for an R1 designation. From our understanding, and there's still debate about this, the R2 designation kind of opens a can of worms, something that our community is trying to protect against. So at this particular time, I wanted to come before the council, not so much as the Neighborhood Council President, but as a resident who lives in the community, and someone who has watched the development in the Charleston area affect the livelihood of other individuals and say, "We still feel as though this should be taken into consideration," and at this particular time, from my opinion, I am not in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on the issue? Mr. Van?
Hi, I'm Carly. I represent the owners of the property. I do the property management for the unit. When we purchased the home, it was in quite bad disrepair, and we've done some work to it since with the electrical and the plumbing and making it livable again. Right now, I went out last week and did an inspection and found some termite damage, and so I've hired someone to go out and do a termite treatment and repair whatever damage had happened from the termites. We get the lawn mowed twice a month, and we take good care of the property, and we were really just hoping to be able to put someone else on the other side of the home. We don't intend on doing any future development with the home, just using it as it sits. I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything, but I just wanted to make sure and say that we are looking, you know, the tenants that we would put in place would be a single woman or a single man because they are just one-bedroom units, so it wouldn't be for anybody but a retired person or a single elderly person, maybe a younger single person just looking for a place left. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. I got a question. How many square foot is each unit? I'm sorry.
Each unit is roughly 500 square feet. It only consists of a living room, a kitchen, large enough to put a dining room table, a bathroom, and maybe an area to put a desk next to the bathroom and a bedroom.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions by council? Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, I see it's 10,436 square feet.
It wouldn't be permitted for anything else to be built on that property, would it, with the existing building? Could I refer that to Ms. Duffy?
Well, I think the problem we've run into with this one and some of the other units in there, these buildings were grandfathered as duplexes, but if they stay more than six months unused, they lose the grandfathering. And I think that's the dilemma that they find themselves in. And you can appreciate their problem because you're sitting there with two bedrooms, and if you can't use it as a duplex, you will have two bathrooms and two kitchens. So it's a difficult situation for them, but I think that's the issue, that if it had been maintained and operational and had not been out of commission, it would have been allowed to still be the duplex under our orders. Does that answer your question?
That gives me an explanation, but I guess I'm trying to, it sounds to me like this property was somewhat maintained, but somewhat not maintained. Now it's being maintained better, being brought up to better standards, and, I mean, I'm just trying to sit here, looking at the map, and I haven't had a chance to hear Mr. Brown's side of his district, but I see multifamily around this district, I hear the neighborhood's concern, but we're talking one apartment, or one additional potential family.
Mr. Brown? And I guess what I would like to know more importantly is, when is the last time something was zoned R2 in this area? How recent has something been done, Mr. Brown, in that area? Can you share that?
I think we probably, not to drag it out, but I think this property was converted into a nursery. It's going on nine years, and then it was sold as a single-family, and that's been going on nine years. I think when the owner has it now, they were purchased on a foreclosure, and through foreclosure, now it's come to the point where we want to turn it back to R2. I think that's where we are, going by the ordinance which is there, but I think we'll discuss it even much more when we come back to committee meeting.
Any other questions by council? Without objection, this is referred to our Public Safety Committee meeting, which meets at 5:00 P.M. this next Thursday.
Item five, I'm sorry, are we ready to move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Item five is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance to rezone the properties addressed as 4398, 4950 Banco Road, and 2849 and 2863 Lakes Road, Charleston County TMS 4091100 Lot 112, 409140005 through 10, 131415, 40915, lots 1 and 6, from CRD, Commercial Redevelopment and M1 Light Industrial, to PD Plan Development, Banco Road Industrial Park, and amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map for those same parcels, from Conservation and Light Industrial to Heavy Industrial.
Eileen?
Can you cancel the slides, please? Thank you. So this is the proposed rezoning of the properties that we collectively think of as the Banks properties off Banco Road. The existing zoning of the properties, most of them are zoned M1, however, they are currently operated as legal non-conforming use because they came in doing things that we would classify as M2 zoned activities at the time of annexation. Also, one of the properties is zoned CRD. The property owners are Banks Investments LLC, Three Lakes Road LLC, BCC Office LLC, and Banks Construction Company, represented by Jonathan Yates. The area of the properties together is just over 36 acres. The parcels were annexed at different times, in the 70s and 80s, and are a part of Council District 6. These are pictures of the posting signs as they were posted for tonight's meeting. And this is an area of the property showing its location at the end of Banco Road along the Bennett Yard, CSX's Bennett Yard, and just south of Lake Palmetto Townhome Community. Next slide, please. And this is the zoning of the properties. As you can see, most of them are zoned M1, and then the one along Lake Palmetto is zoned CRD. And this is a future land use map for the property, showing that currently it has a future land use designation of light industrial, and this rezoning would require a future land use designation of heavy industrial. So the applicants have requested a PDD, and you will receive the entire text of the PDD in your packet for tonight. Essentially, it does appear that they plan on doing any development quickly, but their uses will be the uses that they currently have on site, and then the ability to have certain uses from B2, M1, and CRD, which are uses that are compatible, or what they currently have, and they would also bring in their non-conforming uses to be conforming under the PD. And that's the staff recommended approval, and the planning commission recommended approval. And I just wanted to note, I apologize, the staff recommendation that was in your packet was not quite finished, and I will make sure that that gets fixed for public safety. The applicant did make the changes that staff had requested, and the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning based on the two contingencies staff had recommended, which were two corrections that they had made, and thoroughly a 40-foot berm along Lake Palmetto.
Any questions by council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On page 10 of the PD application, it talks about, at the staff level, being able to make changes in the location of the buildings and various things. I don't think that should be in there. I have full faith and trust in our present planning department, but we don't know in 10 years who will be there. Hopefully, it's still the same people. And I don't want some council scratching their head saying, "Why did they give them this authorization to make these major changes when council had to approve the PDD to begin with?" So I guess basically what I'm saying is, I'd like to see that removed. And on page eight, about the additional buffer, damn, let me get there. I apologize for not being prepared. Oh, never mind on that one. And then on page seven, the sound wall. How are we, the city, going to pay for that? What?
Through the tax increment, Finance and District.
Will it come out of the TIF, then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions by council?
Yes, sir. Talking about a sound wall, we're talking about a planning commission recommendation of 40-foot-tall vegetative berm. I mean, I think that, I think I understand where we're going with this. We can't put a berm in, is that right? The berm would, currently, there is a South Carolina Electric Gas right-of-way that runs through the property, that they will not allow us to build a berm underneath. So the sound wall would be the logical resulting, you know, block the noise and the sight as much as possible.
Any other questions? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks.
Good evening, Mayor Summy, members of city council and staff. My name is Robert Merrell Hawkins. I live at 4969 Lake Palmetto Lane. I was previously employed by the city of North Charleston for 18 years. Was the first city electrician for the city of North Charleston, established the current traffic signal division that the city of North Charleston has now, was the Public Works Director from 1996 to 1999, and was the co-founder of North Charleston Christmas Festival. I'd like to spend my three minutes providing some important historical background and visual context regarding the Banks' construction and Lake Palmetto properties. visual context regarding the Banks' construction and Lake Palmetto properties. I often get questioned as to why in the world would I live right next door to Banks? Didn't I know what I was getting into? And if so, what gives me the right to complain now? Fact is, that this is crucial to understanding the issue. When the townhouses were built, and so Banks' operations were a mere fraction of what they are today, and the residents believed the light industrial zoning then in effect provided adequate assurances. As these pictures show, the asphalt plant has grown tremendously over the last several years. Banks has filled in a large portion of the lake, increased the size and number of mounds, brought in more heavy equipment, and overall, sheer scope of the plant has expanded. We do not buy homes next to what exists there today, Lake Palmetto and Banks having since grown up together. When residents purchased their homes, the Bank's properties were zoned M1 Light Industrial. The properties are still zoned M1 Light Industrial today. At the time of purchase, residents reasonably assumed that operations would not and could not dramatically expand. Why? Because doing so would violate both the light industrial zoning and the property's lawful non-conforming use status. North Charleston's zoning ordinance clearly prohibits heavy industrial uses like asphalt plants and light industrial districts, and prohibits the expansion of non-conforming uses. Banks has been doing so, doing both for years. Passing this PDD to paper over these issues is not the answer. The bottom line is that while it may be tempting to say that the residents came to the nuisance, the opposite is actually true. Heavy industrial activity has continued to expand and encroach towards Lake Palmetto, and residents have been dealing with the dust, noise, and environmental impacts ever since. Unfortunately, this PDD allows Banks to continue to do this, and contains woefully insufficient buffering and mitigation to address residents' concerns. For that reason, I would ask that you please vote no tonight. Thank you.
Next.
I reside at 4967 Lake Palmetto Lane. The president of the Lake Palmetto Homeowners Association cannot be here tonight. For years, Mike has been voicing our concerns regarding the Banks' asphalt plant, and I wish he were here to lay out the problems we have faced over the last several years. Three minutes is not a lot of time to speak for hundreds of people, but I'm going to try to do my best. We're a community of plumbers and electricians, we have some Air Force pilots and other service members who live there, young families with children, college students, including two who are in medical school, teachers, bookkeepers. Right down, a few units down from me is a beautiful senior citizen who loves to roll her wheelchair out on the back deck and do a little fishing. We have retired folks, many who have lived their entire life in North Charleston. We have some veterans, and we have some widows of veterans. The thing we all have in common is that, like most hard-working, middle-class Americans, our homes are our biggest investment, and our health and the health of our families is a concern for all of us. We're not against jobs, we're not against banks. We are against corporate profits at the expense of our health. The experience of not properly questioning and demanding answers to public health issues brought on by the tobacco and asbestos industries should confirm the need to make sure you have all the facts before approving this very important zoning request. We have been concerned about what we know, the noise and dust that cross our lake every day. We now know that the dust carries toxic and cancer-causing particles. However, we are even more concerned about what we do not know, and that is the amount of toxic particles in the lake and in the air, and how much those could grow. I'd like to thank you for not approving M2 heavy zoning status last December. We are very concerned, however, that the new PDD is being used only as a tool to get around heavy industry zoning. Please listen carefully to our next speaker, and before you vote yes, make sure you're confident that all the information asked in the city ordinance regarding planned development districts have been addressed. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Semee, members of city council and staff. My name is Ross Appel with the law firm McCullough-Kahn, and I'm here on behalf of the Lake Palmetto HOA. Richard and the other residents did a great job explaining the community's key concerns, but I want to discuss the legal flaws in the PDD document you'll be voting on in the future. PDDs are strictly regulated by state law, local ordinance, and decisions by appellate courts. Unfortunately, I don't think the Banks' PDD meets these requirements. North Charleston zoning ordinance requires several mandatory elements, but many of these are missing from the PDD before you tonight. The biggest flaw has to do with buffering and mitigation with Banks' neighbors, including Lake Palmetto. Your ordinance requires sufficient buffering with neighboring uses. Specifically, Section 5-7E4 provides that, quote, "Where development abuts a single-family residential district, buildings and activities shall be set back a sufficient distance to ensure, ensure, the absence of any objectionable effects on or from abutting districts." The subsection goes on to provide that, quote, "In the case of industrial uses, like Banks, the distance should be, in fact, great enough to constitute a reasonable buffer." Unfortunately, the PDD contains no buffering beyond what is currently in place. Instead, it relies on existing plannings in the lake itself, both of which were never intended to be buffers and are not buffers. As you know, Lake Palmetto residents are experiencing serious quality of life impacts today, so obviously, the status quo buffering, quote-unquote, is insufficient. Much more is needed to deliver the protection required by your ordinance. The city's proposed sound wall between the properties appears to be the backbone of the PDD's buffering strategy. A promise, no matter how well-intentioned, does not provide the kind of assurance required by the ordinance, nor is it satisfactory from the resident's perspective. At the end of the day, there is no guarantee the funding will materialize, the wall will work, or it'll be a wise use of taxpayer dollars. In the face of this uncertainty, the PDD cannot state, as the ordinance requires, that it ensures, that's the language of the ordinance, ensures sufficient buffering, in fact, in fact. If the PDD passes, but the sound wall never materializes, the PDD will clearly violate the city's ordinance. Let's make no bones about it, the PDD as of now does not comply. The applicant needs to provide more certainty and buffering of their own, and it's not the city's job to do it for them. Aside from buffering, there are various other legal and technical problems with the document before you tonight. These mainly deal with identifying environmental contamination runoff and host of other environmental issues that Richard touched on. As alluded to earlier, there are growing concerns that polluted runoff is negatively impacting the lake, which residents use for recreation. Mike Staton, the HOA president, emailed each of you a list of some of these issues earlier this week. In closing, the HOA believes in a reasonable resolution that enables both Lake Palmetto and Banks to thrive. The PDD before you tonight, however, is not the answer, and it rests on very shaky legal foundation. It will not solve any of the land use conflicts discussed tonight, and will not make any of these issues go away. The HOA stands ready, willing, and able to work on a solution, but we will need time to do that and properly study the issues that are going on out there. It's time to sharpen our pencils and get to work. There have been bad planning decisions made in the past, I think everyone acknowledges that, let's not make another one. I would ask you to please vote no at the appropriate time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, anyone else?
Mayor, members of council, my name is Jonathan Yates, here tonight on behalf of my good friend Reed Banks of Banks Construction. First and foremost, I have to give a, I work all over the state doing zoning. Never have I worked with a city that rolls its sleeves up. Gwen Multry, Eileen Duffy, Dirk Van Ralty, when we worked together on trying to create the PUD, I've never had a city work this hard. Last week, I had an incredible event that I've never witnessed in another city across the state. My client, myself, the homeowners of Lake Palmetto, were all invited to almost a two-hour meeting with the mayor of the city. That just doesn't happen. We're in a city that really works for people, and we appreciate that, and I want to thank you. Mr. Mayor, I thank you. Dirk, Gwen, and Eileen, thank you. It's been wonderful to work with you. A little bit about Banks, we are North Charleston. We were founded here in 1948. We've been operating our facility in the present location for over thirty years. What we're doing tonight is a PDD. The purpose of the PDD is quite simple. It's so we can have peace of mind to do what we do for the traveling public, for all the people in the Low Country, providing paving and grading services. We want peace of mind, and this PUD, we feel, will do it. The goal of the PUD is not to change Banks, not at all. The goal of the PUD is just to allow us to continue to do what we've always done on this property. I'm going to brag a little bit about my friend and client Reed Banks. After these folks moved in next door, and again, this is a local business, since 1948, 210 folks in the local community work at Banks. Reed voluntarily, he heard concerns from these folks who moved in. He'd been there in excess of thirty years, doing the same thing he'd always done. Reed said, "They have some concerns, I'm going to get to work. They have some concerns about noise. Well, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to put four things in place. Out of my own pocket and voluntarily, I'm going to put suppression devices on the cylinders of the asphalt plant. I'm going to replace at great expense the backup alarms on every loader and heavy truck, low-impact backup alarms." People are talking about they hear tailgates slamming. I'm going to strictly enforce no slamming of tailgates. And I think where these folks have gotten a little confused, one thing Reed did to actually benefit them, that's now being thrown back at us as this major expansion of Banks, we reconfigured our material piles. What he did is to create a natural, not a natural, a natural sound barrier. We moved the material piles closer to the Lake Palmetto townhouses, so that would create a sound barrier. We preserved the shorter side, the working side, closer to the plant. He also heard concerns about dust. We're an asphalt plant, doing again what we've been doing since 48. In order to counter any problems with dust, Reed is hired, and it costs him over $25,000 each year, there's a water truck. Twenty-four hours a day, the water truck is patrolling, spraying water on all internal roads at the facility to keep the dust down. In addition, trucks strictly enforce speed limits, again, trying to keep the dust down. Banks is running a state-of-the-art facility. Banks is providing an important service to the Low Country. Banks is a part of North Charleston. We appreciate all this city has done. The other amazing thing in the meeting last week was when the mayor talked about a sound wall. An incredible offer that I've never seen another city step up in that manner. On behalf of Reed Banks, on behalf of Banks, we thank the mayor, we thank this council. What do we want at the end of the day? We want to continue to do what we've been doing, we want to continue to be part of North Charleston, continue to employ several hundred people in this community, and we want to be a good neighbor. We cannot give, and we've tried, we've tried and we've tried hard, and these are nice folks, but we've gotten to the point where nothing is ever good enough, and we understand that. Nothing is ever good enough, but I tell you, Reed Banks and Banks will always do everything we can do. Look at the voluntary things he did, look at the PUD. We did our best, we're going to continue to do our best. We thank you guys so much, we thank the staff, and we hope you can go ahead and approve us, and let us continue on, not what change, but just doing what we've always done. That's all we ask. Thank you all.
Thanks. Anyone else? Then without objection, it's referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets next Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Item six is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance to rezone the property addressed as 5451 Woodbine Avenue, a portion of Charleston County TMS 47207-00036, from R3 Mobile Home Residential to M1 Light Industrial, and amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map for the same portion of the parcel, from mobile manufactured home to light industrial.
Ellie?
So as Madam Clerk mentioned, this is the proposed rezoning of, sorry, let me speak into it. 5451 Woodbine Avenue from R3 to M1. The property owner is Ruka Investments LLC, applicant in this case is the owner. This is just under a quarter of an acre of a larger, almost three-acre parcel. It was a part of the original city and is a part of Council District Six. This is a picture of the property as it was posted. This is an aerial of the property showing its location on Woodbine Avenue, excuse me. Next slide, please. And this is the zoning map of the parcel, showing that there is a small section in the middle, mid-portion of the property that is zoned R3, the surrounding parcel is zoned M1. This parcel was created by the abandonment of a property line between the area that's zoned R3 and the majority of the lot, which is zoned M1. And the next slide shows the future land use map for the property, which tracks fairly well with what the zoning showed. So this property, in this case, the owner is requesting to rezone the small R3 section to M1, which is what the majority of the lot is zoned, and there are industrial uses surrounding it, and the staff recommended approval, and the planning commission concurred.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone living in the trailer park, or is there the trailer park no more?
I think it's just, it would have just been home to a single mobile home, and I don't believe there is one now.
It's all vacant now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue. Hearing known without objection is referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets at 5:00 PM next Thursday.
Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance rezoning a portion of the property addressed as 4351 Riverwalk Drive, a portion of Charleston County TMS number 410000170, from R2 Multifamily Residential to ON Neighborhood Office, and amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map for the same portion of the parcel, from multifamily residential to office professional.
Ellie?
Okay, so this property is currently split-zoned R2 and R1, there's just a very small section that's zoned R1. The R2 section is requested for rezoning to ON. The property owner is Plantation Isle Equity Group LLC. The applicant is the city of North Charleston. The area of the property to be rezoned is 11.66 acres out of a 12.29-acre property. It was annexed in 1987 as a part of Council District Five. This shows the ownership of the property as the county tax rolls currently show it. The next slide shows that we sent the notice of the proposed rezoning to that owner and received the green card in response. The next slide, this is a property, a picture of the property as it was posted. And this is an aerial of the property showing its location south of Riverwalk Drive. The neighborhood to the, to the left on the slide, to the west, is Plantation Isle, and to the north is the Cummins Facility, and to the... to the north is the Cummins Facility, and to the east is the Faber Place Office Professional Park. Next slide, please. And this is the future land use map for the property, showing it currently has a future land use designation of multifamily residential. If this, excuse me, this is the zoning maps, apologize, showing it is currently zoned R2 and is proposed for rezoning to ON Neighborhood Office. And the next slide is the future land use map for the property, showing it has a future land use of multifamily residential. And this property is proposed by the city for rezoning. Over the years, there's been some concern about conflicts between residential uses back in that area and some of the commercial industrial uses, and so it seemed logical to create a break between those office uses and the neighborhoods and provide an office neighborhood designation that would allow for an expansion of an office park-type use on that property. The staff recommended approval, and the planning commission concurred.
Any questions by council? Hearing none, this is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue. Hearing none without objection, it's referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets next Thursday at 5:00 p.m.
Item eight is the first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance zoning portions of the properties addressed as 9549 and 9551 Palmetto Commerce Parkway, portions of Charleston County TMS 3930000, lots O91 and 308, from an unzoned former right-of-way to M1 Light Industrial, and amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map for the same portions of the parcels to Light Industrial.
Eileen?
As with the items you've seen before in the last month or two, this is another former right-of-way that was abandoned properly by council, and we're just going back to assigned zoning. The ordinance has been adopted in the future. As we move forward, we won't need to do this, but we still need to go back to clean up some of these that are on the books.
I'm sure there's no questions by council. This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue. Hearing none without objection, it's referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets 5:00 p.m. next Thursday.
Item nine is the first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance rezoning the property addressed as 2008 Success Street, a portion of Charleston County TMS 469120, lot 115, from R1 Single Family Residential to B1 Limited Business.
So, this is the proposed rezoning of 2008 Success Street, which is a portion of the former Shakora Elementary School campus. It is the portion that was recently leased by City Council to the Fresh Future Farm for their farm and farm store. The property is currently zoned R1, is proposed for rezoning to B1, which would allow for the farm store in that location. The property owner in this case is the City of North Charleston. The city is also the applicant. The area of the property that has been leased and is proposed for rezoning is point-eight-one acres of a three-and-a-half acre parcel. It was annexed in nineteen seventy-two as part of Council District Ten. These are pictures of the property as it was posted for tonight's meeting. And this is an aerial of the property showing the Shakora campus, and then at the southern end, the portion that has been leased to the Fresh Future Farm Initiative. And this is the zoning map of the area, showing that the school is zoned R1, and again, the portion that is proposed for rezoning to B1. And the future land use map for the property, which, the property is currently designated as institutional government use, which tracks with its use as a school. As the city is going to maintain ownership as the path forward for that property is determined, staff determined it wouldn't require, it would not require a future land use map change, because the uses that they're doing are supportive of community and government, community activities. Next slide, please. This is the site plan that the community, the garden submitted to the city. I think it was also included with the lease for the property. So, that is the property.
Any questions by council?
Just one, and it's more of a 2008 success. That would be a number generated specifically for that piece of parcel, because, you know, tax map 115 is nineteen twelve, right?
Right. And because the school's at one end, and this would be at the other?
Yes.
If emergency services, that kind of thing.
Any other questions? Hearing none, this is also an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, give us your remarks. How'd you know I was hungry?
Well, you need some bread, because these are some hot peppers, the mayor. My name's Jermaine Jenkins. Address is 2646 Ranger Drive in North Charleston, and it's been a long journey, your first meeting with you in January, to talk about this proposal, winning the twenty-five-thousand-dollar monies from the community loan fund in order to sponsor this. We have gotten the insurance. We are close to being, I'm close to being a woman farmer with the USDA officially. It wasn't official, I guess, until, you know, they put it on paper. But we got in support from the community loan fund, from Select Health, and also Evo Pizzeria has done a fundraiser for us as of late. We are signed with Trotty United Way. We are registered with them for Day of Caring to put in our food, our food forest around the spot. And that'll be a commercial venture, ladies and gentlemen. But this is what we've been able to do part-time at the community garden. We've harvested over, close to two thousand pounds of produce that is available for everyone. And when we take that to a commercial scale in this nonprofit set, and we think that we can have significant change, and I'd like to thank Scotty here for showing a picture, this is all in the family, where my daughter's come up with a mural to represent what it is that we're doing. This is all about permaculture, where the problem is the solution. And the problem is that there's not enough food, there's not enough jobs, so why not train people to grow the food and then be paid to do so? And that's what that represents. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
We'll have a farmer's market there on the spot. We went into the meeting with the mayor with a zoning map, because we wanted to eliminate access, or barriers to access. So, it's on a bunch of bus routes, and once we get established, if you spend fifty dollars in the store and live within two miles, we'll give it right home.
You got anything that is edible?
It's all edible. And we even, we even have bananas going on at the community garden. We've gotten peaches for sure.
Did you bring me a banana?
It'll be green. We have to cook it with some onions right now, but in a couple of months, it'll be ready to eat.
I think he means what's in the basket.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We could have a pepper eating contest right now. Mayor, bring it on.
Well, you know, I was, I was pregnant eating the hottest salsa. These will put you to tears. When I was pregnant with my daughter, I ate hot salsa. She's fine. She couldn't deal with one bite of this. We got them, and even Scotty will tell you, we got some of the hottest jalapenos in the business. So, white eggplant, purple eggplant, Japanese eggplant, bell peppers, then what are these? The banana peppers. I don't eat them, but I will share them with the neighborhood. But we're going to use some of this for United Methodist Churches having a Faith and Food Justice Workshop in the near future. We're going to pickle some peppers to give off as a raffle for voter registration that's happening at the workday this Saturday. But I will bring some bananas and some peppers for the council next time I come back. Thank you.
Scotty, isn't it great to know you need it?
Well, and one other special thing about Scotty, he lives very close to the garden and was able to use some plants and stuff, and got garden of the, or the yard of the month this month.
Next?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Mevish McIntosh. My house is at 4945 Durant Avenue. I also have a business, Evo Pizzeria, and Evo Craft Bakery. And I just want to say that Fresh Future Farm is doing a remarkable job, even without having a permanent home right now. My daughter and I have gone out to that community garden right off of Spurule Avenue, and it's really and truly and genuinely an educational experience. It is a community bonding experience. And as a public high school educator and currently a teacher evaluator, I can see the importance of bringing community together with such a simple but very thoughtful idea as to having a, not only just a community garden in which folks can thrive and come together, and Jermaine's motto is, "If you work, live, or play in the North Charleston area, come to this garden, harvest what you want, take home what you want." And Mayor Summy invite you to come down this Saturday, because we're going to do another garden cleanup down there. But I just want to say that these guys are doing a remarkable job. The passion, the force, the drive that they have to truly end the food desert in this area is just outstanding. So, please, I ask all members of council, I ask the mayor, and all of the residents of not just the neighborhood in which they want to grow, but the surrounding neighborhoods to please support this magnificent effort. Thank you.
Only one question.
Yes, sir.
Your husband, I'm still waiting on my phone call about the apple pie.
Got it.
I'm waiting on my phone call.
Yes, sir. Oh, you're letting them? Next, anybody else? Yes, sir. You're back, that's good.
Again, A.J. Davis, 1919 Burton Lane. It gives me pride now to speak on Mrs. Jenkins, because in addition to her efforts with this endeavor, her, I guess you can say breathtaking drive for our community garden here in Shakora in a neighborhood that many of you know oftentimes gets a bad reputation, has been an inspiration for me. Every Saturday that she says there's going to be a garden workday, she's there. Whether there's anybody else out there, she's working. And because of that drive, she's pulled together elements in our community that many folks said wouldn't come together. Also, our neighborhood council has been the beneficiaries of some of those same wonderful fruits and vegetables that you see in that basket. She has provided food for us. So, not only have we been able to see her work, we've also benefited from that. And her passion, not just as a gardener, but as a community developer. Everything she speaks about speaks to the empowerment of our community. She's been a representative not only for herself, but for our neighborhood council, representing us at various community events, and always speaks highly of us. She's actually the person that drives our Neighborhood Council Facebook page. So, I feel as though I would be remiss if I didn't come and encourage you as a council to truly support this effort, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, A.J. Anyone else?
My name is Skylar Holsey, and I just met Clover and Mrs. Jenkins and her husband this evening, and I want to say that, 4620 Hyde Avenue. And it is infectious what they're doing. And I came here, this is my first time at the city council, and I'm new to the city, but it's wonderful. And they are wonderful, and they're bringing this community together in a very powerful way, and this was exactly what I was hoping to see. So, I just want to applaud them and say thank you to you all for passing this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Hearing none without objection, this is also referred to Public Safety Committee meeting, which meets at 5:00 p.m. next Thursday.
Indeed. Item ten is the first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance to amend the Westcott Plantation Circle Plan Development District to change the site plan and the permitted uses in the PDD.
So, this is an amendment to an existing PDD. The property owner is Westcott Properties LLC, who is also the applicant represented by Carl McMillan. The area of the property, the total area of the PDD is over twenty-six acres, was annexed in nineteen ninety-six and is a part of Council Districts Four and Nine. This is a picture of the property as it was posted. This is an aerial of the property showing the location of the PD. It is the four quadrants around the Westcott Circle, the Westcott Plantation Traffic Circle. And the area proposed for the change tonight is the southwest, yeah, southwest corner, excuse me. The, this shows the zoning of the properties that is PDD on all four, all four quadrants of the circle. And the next slide shows the future land use maps designates this for major business retail. And this, this PDD amendment would allow for senior housing to be added as a permitted use within the permitted uses for the PDD. It also replaces the approved site plan to incorporate a senior housing facility up to two-hundred-thousand square feet on that particular quadrant of the circle.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask Eileen a question. Eileen, the buffers, are they disturbed in any way? Is it any changes to the buffers from the existing PD, PDD? Or we're just strictly allowing the senior adult living center as a usage, permitted usage in the PD?
Allowing that, and as part of that also, a change in the site plan?
Right.
But those are the only two uses they proposed.
But it doesn't affect the buffers?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's an interesting context that we need to kind of put forth here as we process this amendment. Mr. Mayor, you know that we've had discussions about these PDDs that were approved six, seven, eight, nine years ago under conditions that were prevalent then, only to lay dormant during the Great Recession, and now the developers want to get them up and running again. And that's not always a good fit, to have a plan approved under conditions, again, seven or eight years ago, and then you want to implement it today. So, it requires some, some real renewed planning, and we've talked about maybe putting in a shelf life. And, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your help on another one this week, the Sunrise Steel. But here, we have the Westcott Traffic Circle, which is a very, very important part of the upper Dorchester corridor, and we have this longstanding PDD, and we have the property owner and developer coming back before us. Mr. Steigler took the initiative to call a public meeting a couple of months ago, and just before he had to leave town, and so we, we got to monitor this dialogue between the community and the property owner and the developers. What, and again, this was with your encouragement too, Mr. Mayor, that the community should be out in front on these things. And what we found in a two-hour meeting was that the community had two basic concerns. One was, that community just can't get used to that traffic circle, Mr. Mayor. It's just something that we're going to have to work on. And the other was a concern about the height of this proposed building. It was proposed at four floors, and here we had a very strong consensus at this public meeting, saying, "You know, we're not opposed to this, but could you think about maybe lowering it to three floors?" Now, here's what happened. That was on a Monday night. On Thursday night, I was notified by the developer that a decision had already been made with their architects to lower it to three floors. And on Friday, Ms. Elmore informed me that Chief Connet had already figured out a way to redesign the traffic flow around Westcott Traffic Circle. I've been getting emails all day today, not in opposition to this project, but in absolute support for this project. It's a process, Mr. Mayor, that works just about every time, doesn't it? And in this... And in this case, it just doesn't get any better than this. We appreciate the developer. I'm sure we're going to hear from him, although, again, silence sometimes is golden. But we really appreciate the fact that they were willing to work with the community. And you would have also been very proud of your community, as Mr. Stegler and I are, because they were very constructive. And I think the bottom line here is that if this in fact does pass, and I'm surely going to support it, it will be a much better project. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stegler.
Yeah, just to reiterate some of the things that Councilman Brenson mentioned, the developer has been really, really good with the community. And backing up even further in the timeline there, from the very beginning, when this first became, you know, a talking point or something you thought that might happen, you got Councilman Brenson and I together. We met. Everything's been transparent from the beginning. It's been open, good constructive dialogue. We floated the idea with the community and got a lot of questions. But in the end, the consensus is a strong consensus. I don't think I've received, I can't think of anybody that's opposed the idea of having the senior adult living center there. I think it's going to be a good complement to the community. It's going to be good service, provide a good service to the community. And I think over fifty-five people attended the Fort Dorchester Residential Association meeting or the community meeting that we put together. Councilman Brenson presided over for me and, or for us. I appreciate that. But it was a good turnout, good constructive feedback. And I was, to be honest with you, very surprised and impressed that the community asked to drop from four stories down to three, and it happened. That's fantastic. It's phenomenal. And it satisfied the concerns of the community, and we're looking forward to it. So thanks for all the support, and thanks for the flexibility in working with the community and satisfying their concerns. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Summy, just want to say to Stegler and Brenson, if this Palmetto Highway takes my home, please save me an apartment.
We've negotiated discounts.
Let me just thank the two of you for working so well with me on this. I only have one thing that I think was comical about it. Both of you, you know, arguing about whose side it was on because the street sort of divides it. Who was right?
It's in his district.
It's District Nine.
You are, you are.
I just wanted to get that part down.
But we still have a pepper contest to go through.
If I could just add, I neglected to say staff recommended approval and planning commission concurred.
Thank you. This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give us your short remarks.
Yes. It's very hard to get up here and follow a great-looking basket of hot peppers. So I'm Paul Sacks with Smith Pack at MedCom, four-four-two-three Pheasant Ridge Road, Roanoke, Virginia. We are very excited becoming the North Charleston. We're very excited becoming to Westcott Plantation. As I've told some of you, we're a little bit different kind of company. We are family-owned, family-run. We've been in business thirty-five years. And while we're one of the largest developers of senior housing, we're very picky, we're very picky where we go, what we build, what it looks like, not only to our residents, but also to the community. So we're excited about coming to this area, and we're really looking forward to building a great project. And, you know, I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
How quick will you get started once everything's approved?
I am going to kick off, after this meeting, kick off our engineer. We'll probably have plans in by the end of October, be closing probably the beginning of two thousand sixteen, and then start construction.
Sixteen, fifteen?
Fifteen, I'm sorry. Jumping ahead of myself.
Mr. Brenson and I are getting of the age, we can't wait too long.
We'll get it, we'll get it built quickly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the issue?
Good evening. My name's Victor Moscoso. I live, I reside at fifty-two ninety-four Mulholland Drive. I'm a HOA board member for the Oak Forest Village, and which this PDD is going to be impacting our subdivision, our side of the house. But I'm a member of the Community Association Institute. I'm a member of the Dorchester Corridor Coalition of Neighborhoods. And I have a master's of science degree in community psychology. And I, for once, well, I can't say for once, there's been other times that I think the process worked. And I could say the process worked for this one. I think my only request is to possibly have, I think we've only had one meeting, which was about two hours. But I think another meeting would be great, just to update the homeowners. I mean, I only have five hundred and sixty-one homeowners just in my little area, so I can imagine there are a lot more. Just to give them an update on what's going on with this project, or this PDD, I should say. But I'd like to thank the city for addressing the, there was a number of hazards that, which you know, that are dealing with the circle. And, you know, with the assisted living coming in, you know, we do have some just concerns for the elderly that are going to be living in that area. And I also like to thank the developer for being very attentive to the needs of the homeowners, or concerns, I should say. And, you know, again, I just want to thank everyone. I think the process worked on this one.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none and without objection, this is also referred to the Public Safety Committee meeting, which meets at five P.M. next Thursday.
Item eleven is the first reading in a public hearing of an ordinance amending subsections six dash one-six, Act two and three of the zoning ordinances of the city of North Charleston regarding tree mitigation.
Ms. Allen?
So this is another amendment to the tree ordinance, but this one is fairly simple. It would change the mitigation requirement for grand trees from inch-for-inch replacement to half-inch-for-inch replacement. Does not change the types of trees that can be cut, or simply changes the replacement ratio.
Okay. Any questions?
You have a question, ma'am?
You got a question?
What generated?
The request to change it. Why are we changing? What's wrong with what we had before?
The developers are, have been, the budgets for the mitigations or mitigation for taking down grand trees are fairly substantial because of the high rate of replacement we require. And so this ordinance is brought forth to make it somewhat easier to meet our mitigation requirements.
Do you think it lowers the standard a little bit for our ordinance? Does it? So this is a city, a city, North Charleston request, given your department, planning department?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will certainly have an open mind going into our committee meetings, but, you know, I'll say again, you know, I kind of enjoy hugging trees. If I understand this correctly, we are discounting the mitigation dollar value of trees by fifty percent?
Right.
And we've got a good reason to do this?
Well, I'll give you an example. In your district, we had a project, Walmart was going to build a grocery store, gas station.
This is the one we've been talking about?
On Latson Road.
Correct.
The tree bank mitigation said in order to build this building, they were going to have to pay nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the tree bank, which equates to more per acre than they paid for the land. And when it gets to that point, we need to be able to try to work it where it's feasible development. It's not a problem in a lot of our inner-city areas because it's redevelopment. But in new development of wooded properties, it becomes very difficult and very lack of cost effectiveness to do a project. And I think it will halt a lot of our development if we require that amount of money to be paid. And that's not the only one we've run into.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Along those lines, if I recall right, Boeing had some property they wanted to develop, and they went to the zoning board and got a zoning variance so they didn't have to mitigate as many trees. Is that correct? Am I, I'm not sure if the terminology is correct, but why couldn't this applicant, for example, do the same instead of changing the ordinances?
Because this is a way to stop from having to take every one to a variance, which slows the process, slows the developer, and discourages development. And I know we need to protect what we need to protect, but you also have to protect your ability to grow and to have businesses come in. And if it's going to be too cost prohibitive, then it's going to stymie development in primarily our areas that are developing that have never been developed. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Let me say, I love you. Yes, sir. And I love trees, and I love quality buffering, and I love quality planning. I just see us, this is not all about development, Mayor, in businesses. And we'll talk more next week, but I just, please, our trees are valuable to some and not so valuable to others. And it's a case-by-case scenario. I understand that. I think the issue that you have to understand is that if you don't want the development done, that's fine, then we stop it. But if you're in a situation where that entire corridor along Latson Road, in this instance, grown up in trees, every development that comes in, any, and you're not going to get houses built on the road, it's going to be commercial development. Every one of them is going to be so cost prohibitive, you're not going to see it develop. And we have to, I mean, if we don't want to grow anymore, that's fine. But when you find an issue that needs to be dealt with, you deal with it. It's not that the trees aren't going to be cut down if it's developed anyway. It's going to be cut down, it's just whether they have to pay four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or nine hundred thousand dollars into the tree bank. But they can do a variance. No, you can't do a variance. The variance is a use, you cannot do a usage variance.
You have to show hardship to get a variance, and it can't be economic.
I don't think Walmart can show hardship.
If trees are in the way of Walmart's building...
Well, it can't be economic. And in Boeing's case, there were other compelling reasons why they couldn't have all the trees.
Then that would be a definite hardship. But let's separate that, the cost factor, I understand that. But it's the end result in where it, what it, you know, I see Ingleside. It's been totally just wiped out of trees. It's just been wiped out on the interstate. It's just, what's going to be replaced? That's a beautiful property, going to be a beautiful development. My concern is, when we grant these kind of things and make it less of a burden on development, it makes them more tree-happy to take it all out. And our buffers aren't supportive and strong enough in our ordinances to give me as a council member for our city and our residents against business the necessary protection that I would like to see us go towards. I am more than open, and I beg of everyone and yourself, Mayor, that let's put together something for our buffers. And I will probably back off of trees, period, because I just think we need stronger buffers than type Cs that go six trees every hundred feet. We're talking about taking a normative amount of property, if you've got fifty acres and you go in and take trees out, but we only got to put six. And I'm not going to harp on my soapbox, Mayor, you know where I'm coming from. Please, I beg of you, let's get a stronger ordinance in the city for quality buffers with businesses and residential areas.
All right, but let me talk about the practicality of what we have to do in government. I'll give you a prime example. When Tanger Mall opened, they were very concerned because they were not generating the business that they thought they should generate. Now, when you've got a very multi-million dollar investment in your community, and you've got the jobs that's been created, and revenue that comes from that to support what we do for our citizens here in the city, you get apprehensive. And the business did not pick up until we cut and cleaned the ditch that had small trees in it out so that you could see the mall from the interstate. Okay? And because you can now see it from the interstate, you have seen them develop both ends of the outlet mall, which were future growth areas. They only have two pods of property left in the whole outlet mall development. If you're going to burden development, then we need to create ordinances to stop development. I disagree.
I disagree with that, Mr. Mayor.
I think we can compromise in fairness to residents. And that, and this, but this is the compromise. This is not in a residential community, and they still going to have to do their buffer, they're still going to have to do their landscaping. It's just that how much are you going to charge them to cut down the trees so they can build a building and do parking?
Well, I understand the, your point. I think the planning commission, reading this a little more carefully, made a very valid suggestion, and that is that we seem to be going about our tree policies in a rather fragmented way. Maybe, and we can talk about this more at the committees, but, Mr. Mayor, I don't see us at the intersection of development or no development because of trees. Surely, we're able to, you know, work through that. And, you know, one thing I would want to know, accepting your point on the Latson Road property, is why is it fifty percent? Why wouldn't it be twenty-five percent? I mean, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars still seems like, you know, a lot of money. Where do we get those numbers from? If we're talking about public policy here, it ought to be relevant to something other than just, we need to, you know. So I see your point.
You got to have a starting point.
Oh, yeah.
And the starting point is...
Like poker.
That's right. When the starting point is nine hundred thousand dollars, a lot of people are going to walk away from the table.
And I've never thought about that before until you just said it. And I can understand that.
Yes, sir, Ms. Astle.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know how I like to look out seven generations? And that's what I'm doing with this, and I'm looking at that beautiful area west of the Ashley, that's part of the city called Watson Hill. How will this affect that when that development happens in twenty-five years?
It doesn't affect the development. It affects, are we magnifying the cost to develop to the point that it becomes undevelopable? And... And, you know, we, we put the money in a tree bank. Then that gives us the money to come back in areas that have been neglected in the past to come back and plant trees that are, yes, and it takes time for them to grow in, but those of us who were here for Hurricane Hugo, remember what happened to Park Circle and how beautiful it is today with those trees that we planted that were two, three-year-old trees at that time. But now they're growing in, they're filling out. And it gives us a chance to go back in the areas that have been neglected to improve the view cars and the buffers in those areas.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? I did not make a recommendation, Mr. King. Okay. You don't think a lot of things, that's 'cause you're too old. Anybody else? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing none without objection is referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets at 5:00 PM next Thursday.
Item 12 is the first reading in public hearing for an ordinance amending subsections 6-13C of the zoning ordinances of the City of North Charleston to provide for the screening of mechanical equipment in non-residential areas.
So this ordinance would require that all mechanical equipment be screened. This currently is applied to new development within the overlay districts. This would extend the requirement to citywide and retroactively to existing developments to provide some type of screening around their, excuse me, around the mechanical equipment, which is invisible from the rights of way. The staff recommended approval. Planning Commission expressed a concern about the ability of existing businesses to come into compliance with the requirements of the ordinance.
Express concern about feasibility as to time or as to just conforming?
There was some concern, you know, if you have an air conditioning unit on the outside of your building, it may not be able to, you may not be able to put a screen around it and you may reduce its performance. I don't know much about HVAC, that was my understanding. There was some concern about being, designing screens around some of this existing mechanical equipment that may make it difficult for that equipment to do the job for which it was intended. And just, I think there was some concern perhaps about the cost burn.
But I think this is one of those situations that we were talking about earlier on, one of the things, of letting staff have a judgmental policy where if it can't be done, hell, it can't be done. And you give them the ability, they're not gonna do something and find somebody for something that can't be done. But it, the purpose of it is to where it can be done. And it makes, again, we were talking about trees as buffers and looks, this is something that affects how we present ourselves as a community, and I totally agree with the. Mr. King, you got anything to say on this one?
I don't know. The planning board recommended no.
Because they were afraid some people couldn't afford to do it or that it would be impossible to do and they didn't wanna see people find if they couldn't do it, if it wasn't a thing. We will work, I can assure you, we will work with those if it's a money issue. But if it's, and if it's an issue that it can't be done because the property line doesn't allow it to be done and it is going to block the movement of free force of air for an air conditioner, we're not gonna find somebody for that. But if it can be done to make it look better, it's just, that's the concept.
Mr. Mayor?
And you've gotta remember, we have this in some areas of the city now. What we're trying to do is put it citywide.
I, total understanding to that, if it can't be done, it can't be done. I think that's a good judgment call for our staff who are well-qualified to determine it. I think maybe, you know, I'm looking at this about businesses presently having to have it by next business license. Eileen, was there any issue raised from planning about the timing of when they would have to have it done? It just seems odd to get a total denial on this from Planning Commission.
Because they were concerned about the feasibility of doing it at all, I think they focused on that, recommended denial.
So you don't think the timing of the matter had any impact?
They, I don't remember it being mentioned, though.
Okay. I just think it's fair to businesses, you know, that, you know, we've had, we've had things in the city already for signage and gave. I'm not saying open it up for a long period, but, you know, some of these people's business licenses or everyone's due, what, April? When was our business license, Mr. Mayor? March, April? Is it January?
January.
Okay, some people, Hannigan's April, maybe. Okay. So everyone would have to come into compliance in January. Now, we'll pick it up at committee meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just quickly, so the idea here, Mr. Mayor, is that we would create this standard and then we would anticipate that it would be enforced on an equitable basis through executive action. I like that.
And it's citywide.
With good common sense.
Correct.
We're trying to go back and give as much attention to it citywide as we have in the overlay districts. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, and I guess with citywide, I'm just listening to some of the question coming down on, that's the east side, isn't it? I guess that statement says, business presently operating would have until the renewal of their business license and to comply. So I guess with the business license being issued or it wouldn't be issued on business that are operating, it wouldn't be issued until they comply.
I think that's my understanding. Once this ordinance, if it is adopted, if it is, then I'm assuming we would send something out to inform the property, the business owners that this is coming and then have some type of inspection prior to them renewing their business license.
How much is this affecting the non-overlay district? Is there any, you know, census been done on the community, just seeing what's there?
Because there is no current requirement outside the overlay districts to screen, I would hazard a guess that very few businesses have voluntarily spent the money to fence or screen off their mechanical equipment.
Anyone? This is an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and give us your remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing none without objection is referred to the Public Safety Committee, which meets at 5:00 PM next Thursday.
Item 13 is the first reading in a public hearing for an ordinance amending subsection 5-4B3E of the zoning ordinances of the City of North Charleston to permit the expansion of existing gas stations within the Dorchester Road Corridor 1 and 2 overlay districts.
Yes, ma'am.
So currently, gas stations are allowed in the B2 zoning ordinance provided the property is not located in one of the two Dorchester Road overlay districts. This has created a situation where in the overlay districts, to either get a gas station or be able to expand a gas station, you, the applicant or the property owner would have to have the property rezoned from B2 to B3 or M1. And we've seen this happen a couple of times where these properties have to come in and try to go for a B3 zoning. And then there's always a concern about what could come after that gas station. So staff is recommending to make this process a little less onerous to the existing gas stations in the B2 zoning district, in the overlay districts, that they would be allowed to expand and not be subject to the, right now, they're subject to the provisions because they're not legal non-conforming uses. They're subject to section 4-5, which says no non-conforming use can be expanded. So this ordinance would allow only those existing gas stations in B2 to expand.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm thinking of one gas station in particular at the corner of Ashley Phosphate and Dorchester Road, the Shell Station. I think they wanna expand. Is that correct?
That, I think that's a Circle K. Does that sound right?
Right.
It's, it's a, yeah, Shell Station, and, yeah, they're gonna.
Is that different from the Circle? Okay, there are two there, I guess, then.
My question is, is, somebody brought up the point to me about, I guess they're not meeting necessarily the Dorchester 2 overlay district specifications with regards to buffering. Is there any way to bring them into conforming of buffering if we allow this provision, this change? Or is that complicate matters?
Well, I'm trying to picture that intersection right now because there is currently a pending rezoning that will come before you next month for Circle K, which is at the corner of Ashley Phosphate.
Yeah, it's the Circle K.
Okay, so Shell, but it's.
So they do, they wanna tear their gas station down and rebuild. And in that case, they would have to do all the buffering that is required.
So they would have to adhere to the current buffering requirements?
When, if they redevelop the site.
Okay, that's great.
And in this case, looking at that, that particular case, looking at them coming forward for the B3, and now, if this ordinance does not pass, that rezoning will be before you next month. If it passes, then it's mooted because they could do what they want with their existing zoning. But that was the genesis of this particular ordinance amendment request was to make it easier for those existing gas stations to be able to redevelop and hopefully provide the things that are not there now, because right now, they're, they're very tightly bound to only their existing footprint.
I think it's a good proposal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on that remodeling that they're gonna do, they're, they're gonna level everything there and build new. And it's in my district and I have talked with the people. And that landscaping that is there is very mature. It's at least 20 years old. And I've stressed to them that they can save a lot of money if, when they do their leveling, they leave it. And, you know, then they're gonna have to maybe add a little to it, so. And that is a horrible intersection when you merge from Ashley Phosphate onto Dorchester because the entrance to the gas station is right there at the end of that acceleration lane. Well, that entrance is moving up about 100 feet to where the entrance to the bank is. So you'll, you'll have a smoother acceleration line.
Sounds like an improvement.
Yeah?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, we, we need to, every time we open this discussion, we should start it off by saying, no new gas stations, because that's the point of emphasis. We're not authorizing any new, and I know you've been very, very firm about that, Mr. Mayor. As we look at some of the gas stations in this corridor, they could use some modernization. And one of the payoffs here, as Dwight has pointed out, is that once they do it, they're gonna be required to bring it up to all value standards. So I think this is a really good initiative for that Dorchester corridor community. Is this your idea, Eileen?
I'll take responsibility.
Well, congratulations.
Any other questions? This is also an advertised public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, give us your remarks. Hearing none without objections is referred to the Public Safety Committee, which will meet at 5:00 PM next Thursday.
And the last item for the evening is a request to change the meeting date of December 25, 2014, up one week to December 18 following the regular committee meetings.
Motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none, the, Bob, I wanna make sure you understand why we're doing.
You're, Mr. Mayor, you're in cahoots with Santa Claus.
I am, I am.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Mr. Roan?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson? Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Browns?
Aye.
Mayor Sammy.
Do we have three requests to speak?
They have been withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think the majority of you know about the Pell Meadow Parkway Highway that wants to come further all the way out to Montague, starting in Berkeley County, working its way up through Ashley Phosphate, Midland Park, Aviation. They started out with three plans on last night, I didn't go to the meetings, I knew what it was all about. They now have 10 ideas on how to build this Pell Meadow Parkway coming through. They have been very, very diligently working with me on trying to save Midland Park and where I live. So, working with Teddy Pryor and, what's the man named, with Davidson Floyd. Yes, I spoke with both of them today. They want to get me some statement forms. And I'm asking all my counterparts to please help me. They said the most statements we could get saying, please don't take, you know, the resident's property to build a highway. He said, don't put on there, they don't want the Pell Meadow Highway. But, you know, please don't take the people's property and things like that. And maybe asking the Air Force to please let the county assist with building the Pell Meadow Parkway. And that way, they would not have to bother the residential areas. They can work around us. So I'm going to get those statements tomorrow from them. And I will be calling on my counterparts to please get a group of statements that either take to your church or your committee meetings and get them full out for me. He said, the more we get, the better. And I'm asking for everybody's help. They could even take it to their church. The second, I had a call today from a gentleman that wants to meet with me about billboards in my district. And I said, well, sir, if you wanna talk about billboards, why don't you just meet with all the council at the same time? He said he wanna meet with every one of us on an individual basis to discuss billboards that's in our area. I don't know who this gentleman is.
We have an ordinance that prohibits any additional billboards being put up. And we're going to adhere to that ordinance unless this council as a majority says otherwise.
Is that why he wants to meet with us individually to sweet-talk us?
They requested the administration to meet and talk about more billboards, and we said no.
He offered me some coffee to meet with me. Didn't he call you two? Said he was calling everybody.
They're a good community member. I don't have anything against them, but if they want more billboards, they need to put in a request and we'll bring it to committee and let the body look at it.
We thought that too.
We, we'll make a phone call.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, he wants to take me to breakfast and coffee and.
Well, he's wanting to meet me next week at Cracker Barrel, so let's be handy. Next week, Tuesday, 8:30.
He wanna meet me on Monday.
That's right. He called me. I'm just gonna tell him no.
My daddy taught me a lot of things and one of the most important of them is the free meal.
That's true. Because I said, why can't he just meet with all of us at one time? And he wants to meet on, take each one of us out to eat or some coffee. Meet me to California dreaming.
All right, anything else to come before the bye? Thank y'all very much. Meeting's adjourned.
Good night.
Dot, Sam, talk me off.